We call our work session to order. Thank you for your patience. We are experiencing some technical difficulties. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the role?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rose.
Present. Oh, present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Hill.
Present. Thank you. We have a number of committee business items this evening. We will begin with the administration committee. We have three resolutions for discussion. The first, Resolution Thirty Four of Two Thousand and Twenty Five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Thirty Four, Twenty Twenty Five. A resolution appointing Yvonne Marie Jackson to serve as a member of the Board of the Harrisburg Housing Authority.
Thank you. We have Resolution Thirty Five of Two Thousand and Twenty Five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Thirty Five, Twenty Twenty Five. A resolution appointing Laura Robinson to serve as a member of the Board of the Harrisburg Housing Authority.
Thank you. I would like to discuss both Resolution Thirty Four of Two Thousand and Twenty Five and Resolution Thirty Five of Two Thousand and Twenty Five together. Are Ms. Jackson and Ms. Robinson present? Thank you. If you wouldn't mind coming over here to this microphone, please? Yes, please. Good evening, ladies. Thank you for joining us this evening. If you wouldn't mind taking a few minutes just to introduce yourselves.
Can you hear me from here?
No, can you move the mic? You have to move the microphone. Yes, that's better. Thank you.
My name is Yvonne Marie Jackson. I'm a Harrisburg resident all my life. I've worked for Heimark Blue Shield for thirty-one years. I've worked for the American Legion for almost fifteen years. I've had other jobs, too. I'm a resident of Jackson Towers on North Sixth Street. And I would like to be a member to help our seniors in our building.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Laura Corey Robinson. I've been a resident and living in Harrisburg for the last fifty-six years, which is all of my life. I've worked at the post office for sixteen years, later left the post office and transferred over to DDSP Logistics over in McCumblyland, I'm sorry. And I've worked there until I retired in twenty-one. And of course, I've had other jobs off and on here and there. I would like to become a member to not only help our community and to address some of the issues. Being as I used to live in McClashy Apartments, I seen how it was then, how it is now, and I am very dissatisfied on that. So I would like to be able to help the community so we can make a better living space for some of our low-income people and, you know, get it together the way it should have been a long time ago.
Thank you. Thank you both very much. I don't have any questions. I'm going to open the floor to my colleagues who may have some additional questions for you. I'd like to begin with our Building and Housing Committee Chair, Councilwoman Davis. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, President Hill. Good evening, Ms. Jackson and Ms. Robinson. Thank you for being here this evening and thank you for your willingness to serve our seniors. They're my passion also. Ms. Jackson, what specifically do you believe that you can do to help? Is there anything in particular that you're wanting to see done within the Harrisburg Housing Authority? Anything in particular?
Personally, I would like for the Housing Authority to listen to our seniors, to let them know exactly what they need. One problem I do have at the moment, we have no evacuation plan for Jackson Towers, and that really upsets me. We have brought it up many times when the other CEO was in charge, and nothing was done. And we have a lot of people in wheelchairs, walkers. Also, I want our community to really become a community. You know, we have some stagnant within our building. You know, it's no offense, the blacks are here, the Puerto Ricans are here. I want us all to come together. And our residents' relations, excuse me, they help somewhat, but they also make many mistakes. And I just want to help our people.
Thank you. And you mentioned your building. What building are you in?
I'm in Jackson Towers.
Jackson Towers, okay. Okay, thank you. Ms. Robinson, same question.
For me, I want to help not just Jackson Towers, like all of our low-income. I ride through the city all the time. I see where a lot of our low-income properties, you know, aren't being upkept. You know, I visit quite a few people and talk to them. You see that some of the maintenance problems aren't being addressed. You know, so I want to make sure that we can have them in there where they can live, where they can come to start coming to some of these type of meetings, where there are problems, where they can address the board themselves, you know, so therefore, you know, we can try to get some things done. I don't know what the city's been doing thus far, as far as, you know, everything that they do as far as making sure that the properties are upkept and managed well, but I don't, from the looks of the buildings, it's just horrible. It's horrible. Like I said, I used to live there and you see so much damage. And I just want to get us back so we as a, not only as a community, because a lot of times, some of the crime comes from those very neighborhoods. So if they don't, you know, if your living conditions aren't right, it's horrible. I mean, I can, just from where I live at now, I recently went outside and did a lot of work outside. And the one thing that I noticed is all the neighbors talks about how lovely it looks, you know, how... If you give a person, I firmly believe if you give a person a place that they can be prideful in, they'll take better care of it, you know? So I want to do everything I can. I don't know all of the ins and outs of it. I've been, you know, reading up and trying to learn, you know, because I want to be able to give back to my community. Almost every job I've ever had, I try to give back. So I'm retired now, so I really want to dig in and be able to help the city as much as we can.
Okay, thank you very much. Can I have both of your contact information before you leave or either at the end of this meeting? We have had some difficulties in other buildings, and those problems were addressed. Let me assure you that the city does care. So, thank you for coming down again, and I will work with you from here going forward as the Chair of the Building and Housing Committee.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, President Hill.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, not sure if you can hear us. If you can, do you have any questions? Okay, I know she's experiencing some audio issues. She wanted to try the first round of questioning. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, President Hill. Thank you both for being here tonight. Thank you for your willingness to serve. You know, it takes a special person to be willing to volunteer their time to help their community. So thank you for even reaching out and wanting to do this. I don't really have many questions. The one question is, how did you hear about the Board and why did you want to join?
I just heard word of mouth within our building. I'm not saying I'm a nosy person, but I just happened to hear it. So I said, why not try?
I heard from someone that previously used to be on the Board. We used to talk a lot about a lot of the things and some of the complaints she would have, and she would talk to me about it. And she had told me that she was, you know, going to step down, or I'm not sure of her specifics because she didn't go into great detail on why she left, but I just looked at it as an opportunity to be able to give back. And so I said, well, I'm going to inquire about it and see what I can do and if anywhere I can help.
Thank you very much. That's the only question I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Thank you, President Hill. Good evening to you both. I'm happy to see you both here. You are both staples in our community. And it's good to be nosy, so that's okay. Actually, the question that I did have, or both of mine were asked and answered, I think that you both would bring a great deal to the Housing Committee or the Housing Board, I think, especially since you live in some of these facilities or you have lived in affordable housing, that you would be able to bring not only your perspective, but your experience. And then you hold relationships with people who are there. And I agree as well that if you are given nice things, if you are shown what to do, you will protect those things because they're important to you. And that where you live doesn't dictate how it should look. That's a big thing, and I think those are changes that we can make. And having an evacuation plan is definitely important. So thank you for bringing that up. So I don't have any questions. I want to thank you both for coming here and being willing to volunteer on this board because that's what we need. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Ms. Jackson and Ms. Robinson, for your willingness to serve. In any capacity on the Board, sometimes it can be challenging, but your passion reigns through and your words and your testimony, so I thank you. Not too many questions, just one for each of you. If you can, let's say, focus in on one objective that you want to accomplish during your tenure on the Board, what would that be? We can start with Ms. Jackson.
Is to get the city to listen and to try to help us maintain our building, to keep it beautiful, and to help our seniors. That's my main concern, a senior, because I am a senior.
Thank you for that.
Me, the main objective would be for all across that everybody has affordable housing, that they can afford, that, of course, there's never going to be no places all maintenance-free, but where it's, where the building is upkept, you know, up to codes and have, you know, decent places to stay, because you have not only your seniors, you have a lot of children in these places. You know, where we can try to get them together, where we don't have to worry about so much of the crime or someone getting hurt living in their own home because there's things that need to be fixed.
Thank you. Thank you both, and I look forward to working with you in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Oh, yes. How are you this evening? Good? Seem like I just talked to you guys. My question is more so for Mr. Grover. There won't be any conflict of interest, but do you see any conflict of interest with her being a resident?
As, and I haven't read in a little while, so my memory's not perfect, but I believe the particular statute for the Housing Authority actually requires one of the members to be a resident. So we're required, so the residents have a say.
And I don't want to re, thank you. I don't want to reiterate, but, you know, I would like a a clear answer on the why. The why. The why. Not the YMCA.
My why is because I am a senior. And I want us to live just as good as anyone else. And to have the, the, what's the word I'm looking for? The things to do that other people can do and enjoy it. Like, I know we do have a Board now, finally, in Jackson Towers. So we're working on that now. And I got to ask you this, is that a conflict of interest? Because I'm the treasurer on the Board at Jackson Towers. Would that be a conflict of interest?
That's a legal question.
Yeah, I think you have to ask that question to the solicitor for the Board. There may be things you have to recuse yourself from when you vote, but the solicitor for that Board could tell you that.
For me, the why is because I once, like I said, it stated earlier on, I once stayed in low housing. I'm a definite product of how things can turn around where you're no longer living in subsidized housing. For me, I stayed there. I mean, it was a great way to be able to, now it'd be in the process of buying my home. You know, I look at how good, when I first moved to McClashy Apartments, it was absolutely beautiful. The doors were secure, you know, you didn't have to worry about people coming into the buildings. Even out the South Side, like I have a friend that lives out there in those projects. And at the time, you know, when they first started, they were all beautiful. Now, everything seems to, all of the low incomes around here seems to be rundown. On top of rundown, the maintenance, you have maintenance issues galore, you know? And I just feel as though, if we don't have the right people in play to be able to solve these things, come to you all and be able to solve these things, it's only going to get worse. So for me, the why is because I think people can really do what it was set up originally to do, be able to be a stepping stone to go to the next level in your life.
Okay, and my other thing would be, I could hear passion in both of you when in regards to some of the housing situations as we see in the city of Harrisburg, but I would also want to make sure that we're not going to just rubber stamp anything.
Oh, no.
No, look, that's what I'm saying. Accountability is serious. You know, this is a big role, you know? And we want to make sure, just like you said, that if you see these conditions and you see something going wrong, that you are willing to stand up and use your voice and be vocal for everyone else as well. No matter what side it's coming from, you want to make sure that we're holding people accountable, and that's my concerns, all right?
For me, I agree with you wholeheartedly. Anyone that knows me, of course, I know none of you really know me well, but I'm a stand-up person. Can't nobody get in my ear. I'm going to do what's right for the community as a whole because I'm a part of that community. And even though I may not live in low-income housing at this moment, but it affects all of us because if it starts there and it comes at some point, it's going to come out of that neighborhood. So, yeah, accountability, I think everyone should be held accountable. If you do something, you know, you see something, you say something.
All right. No further questions?
Thank you. Let's try again. Councilwoman Daniels, do you have any questions? Yes, you're unmuted, but we can't hear you. I'm sorry. Are you interested in calling in? I don't know if she can hear us.
Just whether the nominees could flag areas of conflicts of interest.
Me either.
Neither of them have conflicts of interest.
I don't know. Thank you. I just wanted to review two things before we move these resolutions. The Housing Authority's law, as amended, provides for a five-member Board made up of residents of the city who shall serve staggered five-year terms. Under the statutory framework provided through the Housing Authority's law, the current staggered terms of Board seats should expire in Two Thousand and Twenty Five, Two Thousand and Twenty Six, Two Thousand and Twenty Seven, Two Thousand and Twenty Eight, and Two Thousand and Twenty Nine. So I just wanted to note and remind everyone that there are three current Board members. Ms. Gloria Martin Roberts was appointed through Resolution Twenty Eight of Two Thousand and Twenty Four, and her term expires on June thirtieth, Two Thousand and Twenty Nine. Ms. Sheila Bennett was appointed through Resolution Forty Six of Two Thousand and Twenty Two, and her term expires on June thirtieth, Two Thousand and Twenty Seven. Mr. Zachary Jackson was appointed through Resolution Twenty Nine of Two Thousand and Twenty Four, and his term expires on June thirtieth, Two Thousand and Twenty Six. So the two openings will end in Two Thousand and Twenty Five and Two Thousand and Twenty Eight. But as you notice, the expiration dates are June thirtieth. So the person appointed for June thirtieth, Two Thousand and Twenty Five, your term is going to end in Twenty Thirty because otherwise, you would only be appointed for like five days. So I just wanted to note the expiration dates for the two ladies. Ms. Robinson, your term will expire in Twenty Thirty, and then Ms. Jackson, your term will expire in Twenty Twenty Eight. Okay?
If God's willing.
God's willing. He is. So I just wanted to note that for your reference. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolutions Thirty Four and Thirty Five of Two Thousand and Twenty Five?
Yes, President Hill. I just wanted to ask, have you reached out to any other organizations for any assistance or anything? Just curious.
When you say reached out to any organizations, you mean as far as for this?
Within the city for help with some of the problems that you're experiencing.
Well, all I know is I had a meeting with the Housing Authority, maybe a year ago, and like I said, Senor was still in charge. And nothing seemed to, it went above their heads because Senor knew he was leaving. And the person in charge now, he just sat there. He didn't have much to say at all. And we asked about the evacuation plan then, and nothing's been done. Nothing.
Thank you for that information. Thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. I move to add Resolution Thirty Four of Two Thousand and Twenty Five and Resolution Thirty Five of Two Thousand and Twenty Five to our next legislative session agenda for a formal vote. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Next for discussion, we have Resolution Forty Four of Two Thousand and Twenty Five. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Forty Four, Twenty Twenty Five. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into an access control agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Department of General Services for that portion of Geiger Street situated between Front and Second Streets in the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. You're going to provide an overview of Resolution Forty Four of Two Thousand and Twenty Five, please.
I think they need the people who wrote it to do the overview.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know. They just...
They're the appropriate people to talk about the street and the process. But as the council's aware, a number of officials from the state reached out to a number of officials from the city about closing that street after the firebombing of the governor's mansion. They have, in fact, already blocked it off, plus part of the property on the other side of that street for whatever renovations they're doing. The formal document from DGS is a security and maintenance agreement that they will take responsibility for security and maintenance of that property between Front and Second Street in order to better secure the mansion. I think Joel could talk about where that goes into like the city's street maps. Sam can talk about the mayor's authorization to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Let's begin with the mayor's authorization, please, to move forward with this request.
Yeah, I just, Sam Sokowski, interim business administrator, just want to express that the mayor is one-hundred percent supportive of this process. And I think she thinks it's very important that the state is able to secure the mansion concerning what happened. So we encourage the council to, city council, to fully support this, and she's on behalf on Board one-hundred percent, so.
Thank you.
Good evening. Joel Sater, City Engineer. Geiger Street from Front Street to Second Street is a relatively unused alleyway. I don't see any issue from a transportation standpoint of having that closed for a long-term solution. And agreements such as this are similar to agreements between the Commonwealth and the city for numerous other things throughout the city, such as maintenance and utility agreements. So this is really nothing new on the city's behalf, and as steward of the right-of-way, I also support this endeavor.
Thank you very much. It seems like a no-brainer to me in an effort to collaborate with the Commonwealth to protect our governor. So I don't have any other questions or comments. I will open the floor to questions from my colleagues. I'll begin with our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilman Jones. Do you have any questions?
No. Thank you, President Hill. Of course, it would fall on me, public safety, right? No, the only thing I see, though, for some, and I can't really picture the street, Geiger, I mean, where you want to block it off at. But I'm looking at one of the conditions that if for some reason we may need the street again, we can reverse this, right? So, no further questions.
We will all be dead by then.
Yeah, right. For some strange reason, I said.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. No questions for me. Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Thank you, President Hill. Good evening to you both. Thank you for being here this evening. I don't have any questions. It's there to further secure the governor, so there's no questions for me.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you for being here tonight. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you, President Hill. No questions.
Thank you. And I believe we've lost Councilwoman Daniels by Zoom and by phone, so I don't believe she had any questions. Well, if there is no further discussion, I move to add Resolution Forty Four of Two Thousand and Twenty Five to our next legislative session agenda for a formal vote. This concludes the business of the Administration Committee. Next, we have Community and Economic Development. We will begin discussion with Resolution Fifty Six of Two Thousand and Twenty Four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Fifty Six, Twenty Twenty Four. A resolution approving the preliminary slash final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Midtown Redevelopment LLC to consolidate- plan submitted by Midtown Redevelopment LLC to consolidate and subdivide various vacant parcels into multiple project sites to develop single-family and multifamily dwellings, commercial space, and accessory parking, along with associated improvements in the area bound by Riley Street, Fulton Street, Sayford Street, and James Street.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Knight. If you wouldn't mind providing a brief overview of Resolution 56 of 2024, please.
Sure. And to catch council up as to how we got here, this was reviewed initially at the Planning Commission meeting at the same time as the Capitol Town Homes, which I believe council reviewed at the end of last year in November, I think. At the time, however, the applicant was not able to attend the meeting and kind of granted or requested an indefinite continuance of the case, and so that's gotten us back to where we are now, back on the agenda. And this project is similar to the Capitol Town Homes project, but it has a few differences. It involves a development across seven different blocks on 11 different project sites. So in that way, it's similar to the Capitol Town Homes one, sorry, Capitol Heights. But it also includes some commercial, standalone commercial components, and it's a bit more integrated within an existing community neighborhood where it's more of an infill than on big vacant blocks. And so this particular project involves the development of 62 units across 23 individual buildings and approximately 5,500 square feet of commercial space. There are three multifamily dwellings, 12-unit multifamily dwellings, within the project footprint. All of them are kind of fronting onto Calder Street. There are also three separate blocks of, or sorry, yeah, three separate blocks of townhomes, six townhomes each. And then there's a food hall, I guess would be the best way to say it, fronting on Sayford Street at the southern end of the project site, and a 44-space parking lot directly adjacent to that. The project did go through, again, at the same time as the Capitol Town Homes, had similar zoning relief requests for the use, for encroachment setbacks, for some relief from off-street parking, although a majority of the parking is provided in that large 44-space parking lot, and that was designed to kind of limit the amount of curb cuts on the different project sites, areas, and also to ensure that the land was being used in the most efficient way possible for building footprints and yards instead of just little parking pads and curb cuts and driveways everywhere. Overall, again, the project will add about 62 units in scattered sites across the two blocks just to the north of where Sayford Street is, so a little bit north of the Broad Street Market area. And it will hopefully bring about some new development there that allows the residents of the homes to be supportive of the various businesses in the area, including the Broad Street Market. When that gets up and reconstructed, this will help to ensure that the vendors can get back on their feet, hopefully in a more timely manner. The Planning Commission recommended that city council approve the request with the following conditions. The applicant should design all of the proposed residential units within the project to be at least visitable, if not fully ADA accessible, including aspects such as zero-step entries for the proposed townhomes, to ensure the units are accessible to as much of the population as possible. The applicant should ensure that all new vehicular access points feature a driveway curb cut design as opposed to a street curb cut design, and that's pretty common across the various developments that the Planning Bureau reviews. The applicants will coordinate with the City Engineers' Office on new or reconstructed sidewalks and pedestrian markings such as crosswalks. The Planning Bureau recommends that the applicants construct sidewalks the full width of the public right-of-way along Calder Street and North Fourth Street specifically, and there will obviously be, this will obviously generate significant amount of new pedestrian activity, especially on Calder Street because many of the project sites front that road, and ensuring that we have both ADA-compliant sidewalks but also new crosswalk markings and signage where necessary will help to ensure safety of all users of the road. The applicant should consider the inclusion of secure ground floor bike storage in the proposed apartment and mixed-use buildings, and will include bike racks near the entrances of the commercial components of the project as required per Section 7-327.3E of the Zoning Code. Planning Bureau would recommend that such parking be located near the main entrance and sheltered if possible. The applicants will provide formal landscaping and photometric plans to inform discussions with the city arborist and to confirm consistency with the applicable discussions with, or the applicable requirements of the zoning code, such as the fence regulations and the environmental performance standards. And finally, the applicants will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to confirm the appropriate size, location, and design of refuse collection, particularly for the multifamily dwellings and mixed-use buildings. Obviously, the townhomes would just have single individual bins, but the 12-unit apartment buildings may require a dumpster, or they may require a multitude of individual bins that's kind of up to the Department of Public Works and their ability to access, you know, a site such as a dumpster. The Planning Commission recommends the city council approve the request for the following reasons. The applicants have received approval from the zoning hearing board for the various relief requests needed to effectuate the project as proposed, and has met the conditions of those approvals in the subsequent law consolidation and land development submission. Project will enhance the character of the neighborhood by replacing vacant lots with buildings that reflect the height, massing, and configuration of the surrounding community and with commercial space tailored to small businesses similar to those along North Third Street. It will enhance pedestrian infrastructure throughout the project area. The proposed residential units, both the townhomes and the apartment buildings, will feature two-bedroom units, which are in higher demand than some of the studio one-bedroom developments that have been more commonplace in recent proposals. And finally, the proposal will add new residents to the neighborhood and activate the street and surrounding community on nights and weekends, and contribute to a growing customer base to support local businesses.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Knight. Good evening. Would you like to add anything to Mr. Knight's overview?
Good evening, yes, thank you. My name is Chris Bryce. I'm the owner of Midtown Redevelopment. I'm here with my professional engineer, Christian Koba, who made it at the last minute. And, no, I agree with everything Jeff said. We're excited to move forward. We actually are working with HRA to have the lots transferred over imminently so we can build, we actually think we can break ground in November for the first 12 units, so we're super excited. That'll be on Calder Street. And so we actually have plans to do the first three 12 units in succession, so we think that we'll be able to get the first three 12 units done within the next 12 months. And we sort of have a game plan to move forward through all of Marketplace and Capitol Heights. It's been very difficult to figure this whole thing out, but I think we've kind of cracked the code, and now we're moving forward.
Okay, so I just wanted to, Mr. Knight provided an update of how we arrived here, so you think that, I guess the extension of time provided enough time for you to revamp your timeline to move forward with the project?
Yeah, well, we had some, we had to pivot a little bit. I had a builder partner who I had lost, and so now I've, I don't know if anyone on the board knows, Justin Hindley. Justin Hindley is a professional friend, and he's, we worked together, and we found other partners to work with. I'm always going to be a member of the team that's building, but we have other financing, we have other interested investors, and so that was sort of the reason for the delay, to be completely honest with you.
No, thank you, I appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify, and for anyone listening, if they remember the other project. Okay, I don't have any other questions. I'll open the floor to my colleagues who may have some additional questions for either of you. I'll begin with Councilwoman Davis. Any questions?
Thank you, President Hill. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here today, this evening. I was just thinking about the residents that currently live in that neighborhood. How would this project affect them?
So, this has been going on for a long time. I don't know if I should be embarrassed about it or not, but we did, we put a lot of time into meeting with the neighbors, so I think it was actually during COVID this all started, and we actually put up tents on all of the building sites, and we advertised that we would be there, ask, answer questions, and a lot of neighbors, especially in the Marketplace Development, came and spoke with us, and we answered their questions. It's all very transparent because we already have all of the building drawings. So we actually had big posters up with the drawings of the buildings on the lots that they would be in, so people could visualize it. And we actually made a lot of changes because of that input. We were really, we really wanted to go four stories with some buildings, and that was just not something that the neighborhood was getting behind, so we changed to three stories. But they are all of a size and shape that fits with the existing neighborhood, and the density's not much greater than what was there originally, for sure. So, because we're putting townhouses where townhouses were, we are putting a 12-unit building where like eight or nine townhouses would have been. So it's not really that much different than, and a matter of fact, the townhouses would have had five bedrooms, and these apartments only have two bedrooms, so, and we are providing parking as well. So, I think actually, you know, I'm a city resident myself, and I spend a lot of time in Midtown. I'm ecstatic about this. I think we're going to have market-rate building in Midtown, and we haven't had that in 30 years, so it's something I think to really be happy about.
Okay, thank you. And that's it for me for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions for you at this time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Thank you, President Hill. Good evening, thank you all for being here. You touched on what kind of my question was when you said market value, so I'll just extend it. Will it be market value for the apartments, or the townhouses, or both?
So, so we, our overall proposal for Capitol Heights and Marketplace includes a 10% carve-out for, I guess, is it low-income housing?
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing, thank you, sorry, I apologize.
No, it's okay.
And, so, but those builds are all in Capitol Heights. So the Marketplace is all market rate. So we're starting in market, so we want to focus on the density, the highly dense area for us, Marketplace, and as I said, we've got the ball rolling from an investor perspective, and so we're excited about that. But then, the low-income facet will happen sort of when we move into Capitol Heights, and those are all identified in our project plan.
Okay.
Which was, sorry, the Capitol Heights project plan was approved prior to this.
Yes, right, okay. And then, and this could have been in here, but I didn't see it, for the townhomes, those are Capitol Heights.
So there's two different neighborhoods?
Right, that's why.
Capitol Heights is, does have some townhomes, but it also has mostly 12-unit apartment buildings.
That's what I thought, okay, okay. And are the townhomes going to be for sale at all, or is that just to lease and rent?
Yeah.
Are you pushing home ownership?
No, well, there's no question, we do have some townhomes that will be for sale. I don't think it's going to be many, though. I think we'll probably have five or six for sale.
Okay.
And I just want to share, like, it is so crazy expensive to build a building these days, it's nuts.
I know.
So, it's going to cost us like close to $300,000 to build them. That's just to build them. That doesn't mean, that like all this time, all the time to get here.
Right, right.
It's not even included. So, I don't know, it just, the numbers don't work out, you know?
Well, that's why I'm asking, because you know, I just wasn't sure, I didn't think I saw that in there, so I was going to ask if any of them would be for sale. And with, I know the apartments were two bedrooms.
Yes.
Were also the townhouse. When I was looking at it, it looked like all the townhomes were two bedrooms, and each had their own bathroom, and I think like a walk-in closet, but I didn't know if I missed something.
No, so you're exactly correct. In Midtown, that's how they're designed. So, to get them to be affordable to build, we kind of, we made them two stories, and they're two bedrooms. So they're like big apartments.
That's what I, okay, that's what I, but they're still nice. I am a townhome person that likes to go three stories up. That's just me with a garage underneath, but I get a little, you know, but they still look really beautiful. It definitely will add, it will be nice to not see empty lots anymore. So, I think that would be great. I'm also a big person on QR codes, and people can put their phone out and bring up a picture of what you're doing so they can see what's coming. So if you could do that, I think that would be great for the neighborhood, so you can say, hey, here's what's coming, and I think everybody would really enjoy that, so, thank you. No other questions?
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
No, no questions for me. Thank you for the work thus far, and look forward to seeing the completion of the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. There are no further questions. I move to add Resolution 56 of 2024 to our next legislative session agenda for a formal vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Resolution 32 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 32, 2025. A resolution approving the preliminary slash final land development plan for 555 South 25th Street submitted by Commonwealth Charter Academy to demolish a portion of the existing school building on-site and redevelop the property as a cyber charter school with a larger building footprint and expanded site and access improvements.
Thank you. Yes.
Madam, Council President, if I just could mention, there is a as-corrected version of this one. I don't know if you guys have it. It's just a technical amendment. In my drafting of this legislation, I made a mistake in the bounding properties, so if you guys have the corrected...
It's linked, the corrected version is linked, so everybody should be able to access it.
The language that was corrected is in the second whereas clause, the property is bounded by. I corrected that with the proper information as given to me by the applicant. They did get it right. It was totally just a Law Bureau mistake, so it's a technical amendment.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Mr. Knight, if you wouldn't mind beginning with our overview of Resolution 32 of 2025, please?
Sure. So this one is a much more simple one. It's basically the majority demolition of the existing or the previous Roman Catholic DSC school that was on-site, because they moved their students to a downtown campus, and a reconstruction about, I'd say probably 50% or 75% larger than what the existing building was as a cyber charter school. So in doing so, this is not going to be a school that will have students coming every morning, teachers coming every morning. It will be very similar to the applicant's operations at the Commonwealth Charter Academy building up adjacent to the Farm Show, if you're familiar where that is. So it'll be a lot of virtual learning areas and kind of some, I guess, custodial staff and office workers to support the people on-site, but it will be definitely lower impact than what a traditional school might be. And you can see, the applicant's brought a storyboard there with what the proposed design looks like. They've definitely been working with us on both designing the project to help improve the neighborhood while also engaging the community as part of this project. One of the big things from the city's perspective was, if you're familiar with the site, you basically come into South 25th Street on Berry Hill, and then there's two driveways on either side of that intersection, and that kind of creates some confusing traffic circulation issues where there are some crosswalks and other places where there aren't. So one of our big things was having the main entrance relocated directly across from Berry Hill Street to create a four-way intersection there, which kind of clarifies the movements for all users and especially for drivers. And they also will have a kind of secondary accessory truck access to the north of where that is, and that's to help them not only with bringing in larger equipment, you know, servers and things like that for when the project is being constructed, but also in serving those things, and I think replacing them over the course of time, maybe bringing in some like larger shipments of, you know, food and other equipment onto the site. And otherwise, you know, they've engaged the community, gone out, told them what they were doing, asked them, you know, kind of what types of improvements they'd like to see. You may be aware, the property's been vacant for, I think, probably five years or so. And so as, anything new coming in there is going to be kind of a bit of a change for the neighbors, and the applicants were pretty diligent about going out, doing door-to-door canvassing of the neighborhood to just tell them what they were doing, let them know what changes were going to be coming to the community there. But overall, there's been a significant improvement, you know, not only with the appearance of the site, but also, again, with the infrastructure rounding, surrounding it, that relocation of the driveway, but also, they're going to be constructing sidewalks along the whole frontage of the property on South 25th Street. So, all in all, this will be a, again, a significant improvement for both the site and the community, and the Planning Bureau, you know, would like to thank the applicants for their coordination with us to make sure that this project is... to make sure that this project is, you know, the best it can be for the neighborhood. And because the applicants have addressed a lot of the Planning Bureau's initial comments in the project, we were happy to recommend an approval without conditions to the zoning, to the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission did recommend that the case be, that the city council approve the request without conditions for the following reasons. The applicant has collaborated with the Planning Bureau and City Engineers Office to incorporate many of the recommendations from the initial submission, which will enhance the property's contribution to the surrounding community in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Project will result in the in-kind replacement of an educational facility with proposed changes that will bring benefits to the city and surrounding neighborhood, including the improvement of a complicated intersection that will make the street safer for all users. And finally, the applicant has engaged residents of the surrounding neighborhood to secure public buy-in from the community.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Good evening, gentlemen. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves and if there's anything you'd like to add to the conversation, we would appreciate that.
My name is Jim Skinner. I'm the Facilities Director for CCA. And I'm not sure I have to say anything. It was very well said. We hit everything that we're trying to do as far as continuing basically to expand our staff into Harrisburg.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Mayur Patel. I'm with Lothner Patel Developers. I agree. We've been working with Mr. Knight for several months now and there was a lot of good back and forth with Planning Commission as well. I think it is important to reiterate, we knocked on every home in the neighborhood that has a line of sight to this school and talked to seventy-five percent of the neighbors, showed them the plans, had great discussions with them. A lot of good dialogue. Everybody was in favor of having these renovations done to the building. And I do have one request. On page three of the resolution, there's a traffic impact study reference. I know, Mr. Knight, we had met with the city engineers and you guys said without conditions, we could recommend approval. So, I just wanted to see if we can get that removed in the final draft.
Uh, yeah, I think, I think this is the old draft.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Noted. I will, I, thank you for providing additional details regarding the neighborhood canvassing. I was curious to know how that went, so thank you for sharing those details. I don't have any other questions. I'll open the floor to my colleagues who may have some additional questions. I'll begin with Councilwoman Davis. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
I don't have any questions. It was pretty well summarized. I look forward to seeing something get done with the building.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Oh, good evening. Thank you all for being here this evening. I don't have any questions. Mine were addressed. My biggest issue was just the traffic coming up Twenty-Fifth and turning onto Berry Hill. It's very, it's hard to see sometimes around that corner. So, I just, you know, had just some concerns. I know you're coming straight out onto Berry Hill, but still cars coming up and it's very congested in that area, especially when then you try to turn onto Hell Street. But you did address most of those concerns, so I don't have any questions. Just thank you for bringing that project there. That's been vacant. I thought, I thought longer than five years. It just felt like nothing's been there like ever, so since the school had moved out, but thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Raw, or excuse me, Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you all for being here this evening. I have a business in that neighborhood, so it's good to see, you know, something going on with that school. I remember actually going there as a polling place years ago. So, if you guys foresee any issues with two schools in the immediate area, what would those be? Or do you not really consider or foresee any traffic issues?
I, I don't foresee any issues. We won't have any buses or anything like that coming in. It'll just be our staff.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure.
No further questions.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Uh, yes. Uh, I live on South Twenty-Fifth Street. You guys didn't knock on my door.
I'm sure I did. You probably weren't home at the time.
Yeah. Yeah, I moved about eight years ago, that's why.
I hit every door.
No questions, no questions.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I move to add Resolution Thirty-Two of two thousand and twenty-five to our next legislative session agenda for a formal vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes the business of the Community and Economic Development Committee. We will now move to the Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee. I will defer to our Parks, Recreation and Enrichment Committee Chair, Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, President Hill. Mr. Truesdale, can you please read Resolution Forty-three of two thousand and twenty-five?
Resolution Forty-three, two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a lease agreement with the Harrisburg School District for that portion of land that houses the Jackson Lick Pool in order to allow continued operations as the parties work towards finalizing the city's subdivision and acquisition thereof.
Thank you, Mr. Truesdale. Is there anyone here from the administration who can give us more information on Resolution Forty-three?
I, I can start us off.
Okay.
As the council may recall, after some back and forth, the city had made an offer to acquire the property where Jackson Lick Pool is. We had found in the course of a grant process that we actually never owned it. And the pool's been there since nineteen sixty-nine at, at the most recent. It turned out it's part of a larger parcel owned by the school district and it's not divided. So, the school district has agreed informally to the offer to acquire it for a dollar, take the cost of the subdivision plan, which the city will do, the survey, which will draw the new boundary lines. Without that fully completed yet, which just takes some time, they had asked that we enter into a lease agreement until such time that that is done. And that, that documents, those will come back to you as they come forward, the subdivision plan and the survey. So, this, this I think gives everybody peace of mind at the school district side and the city side that it's acknowledged that they own the land and that we are taking responsibility for it during the lease period as we get ready to move forward to divide the land and acquire it.
Thank you. And would you, Mr. Director Baker, Director Ross, would you like to add anything else to what Mr. Grover said?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. I don't have any questions. It was pretty straightforward. I think this is something we've been waiting for because with this agreement, we can then start also doing work on Jackson Lick. I would, is that true?
And we've been doing some work.
We have, but I mean, we were going to renovate it completely. Wasn't that the issue that we couldn't renovate it completely without some type of lease agreement or ownership towards it?
So, that grant money moved on to other projects just because it's controlled by third parties.
Right.
And then, that money will have to come back as, you know, as, as we move forward.
Right, but now we would be able to
Right.
actually utilize it.
Yes.
When it comes back. Okay. All right, thank you. So, no, I didn't, I don't have any questions. I'm just glad we're moving forward with this and we've come to some type of agreement for our residents to have some more information on what's happening with Jackson Lick. So, I'll ask my fellow councilmen and women if they have any questions. Councilwoman Daniels is not, where's this right? Okay, so, Councilwoman Davis, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross. No, the explanation by Solicitor Grover was clear communication to me, so I don't have any questions. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Vice President Green?
Good evening. Thank you all for being here. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. President Bauer, excuse me, President Hill?
No, thank you. I don't have any questions.
Okay. Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both for being here this evening. More of a statement, it just would have been great to have someone from the district here just to speak on their behalf. But I look forward to it. Long time coming. Is there anyone that may be planning from the district to come, maybe for the legislative session or?
Yeah, frankly, I think it's all lawyers and I don't think they want to pay them to come from Philadelphia for the meeting.
Well, I meant from the school district, a board member, superintendent, et cetera.
Not that I'm aware of.
Because from experience, it's just, without having those entities at the table, it's usually he say, she say. It'd just be great to have everyone's input and hear firsthand everyone's information.
I understand what you're saying. I, I can make the inquiry. The, but this is sort of a lawyer, the lawyer arrangement. So, I will note that the superintendent has been meeting with the mayor. He has emphasized to the mayor and others that he believes the role of the school district to be more student-focused than grown-up focused and that he, it was important to him that a pool be available for the students of this school district.
Right, absolutely.
Which was a great, refreshing thing to hear.
You said for a dollar and then they might come back, you know, we've never offered it up for a dollar. It's three point three, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, this, but this isn't that agreement. This is a lease agreement till we get there.
To utilize the property, right.
Right, so.
And then, there'll be further discussion after?
Where all the other documents come back to you.
The lease.
Right, and so, we're, but we are picking up the cost of the subdivision plan. We've retained outside. It'll state council who's retaining the surveyor, who will, and the negotiation of any is really where is the appropriate spot for us and them to draw the line.
To draw the lines eventually.
So, that our utilities are properly in place for everybody, that kind of stuff.
But the long-term goal is to acquire?
Yes.
Okay. No further questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Jones?
You want to clear that up?
Let it rain.
One more time, put that into the record. Mr. Grover, uh, this is where, I, I know this is like a, like kind of, I don't want to call it a mandate, just temporary right now again until you, the district and the city figure out what's what. But in the interim of that, the liability is on us right now, right?
It always was.
Okay.
It just always.
I know that was part of the fight, the part of the, the agreement or non-agreement that was part of it, so.
We run a pool, right? I mean, so there, the laws, who has what responsibility seems pretty clear.
Okay. No questions.
All right, thank you. I would like to move Resolution Forty-three of two thousand and twenty-five to our next legislative agenda. Thank you for coming tonight. You didn't even have to do much tonight. Look at that. See, it was easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final committee business this evening lies with the Public Works Committee. I will defer to our Public Works Committee Chair, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Today for the Public Works Committee, we'll be discussing Resolution Forty-two of two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Truesdale, can you please read Resolution Forty-two of two thousand and twenty-five into the record?
Resolution Forty-two, two thousand and twenty-five. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Arbiter Pro Incorporated for the purpose of performing a tree inventory and related urban forestry services.
All right, and I see Deputy Director Ross speaking on behalf of Resolution Forty-two. Could you give us an overhaul of just all entails or if you would like to speak first, please introduce yourself? I will speak directly into the mic for those watching at home can hear you clearly.
Sure thing. Thank you for being here tonight. My name is Cody Legg. I'm the city forester here. As Truesdale stated, this resolution is approving us to enter into a service, a professional service agreement with Arbor Pro to perform a citywide tree inventory, including our city parks. After review of the proposals, Arbor Pro was recommended for this project. They scored the, the highest out of all five proposals. Arbor Pro not only proved that they have extensive experience with performing street tree inventories with many other municipalities, much larger than the City of Harrisburg here, and that they have quite vast array of qualified personnel. But they are also one of the lowest prices that was offered to us, which, which is great on, on our behalf. And also, I'd like to state for the record that this is going to be funded by an IRA grant that was recently awarded with us and that grant is completely waived of match. That's the main points of, of the proposal here. I do have two Arbor Pro representatives here with us virtually. Chris Conley, Division Manager, and Mason Burdick, Operations Manager, if we want to present them with any questions as well.
Absolutely. Or if those two gentlemen would like to add anything to the discussion? If you can hear me on virtual, would you like to add anything to the discussion?
Uh, this is Chris Conley, Division Manager. I don't have anything to add currently to the discussion, but thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Ross, would you like to add anything?
No, I don't have anything.
All right, well, I'll open it up to council, starting to my immediate left, Councilman Jones?
No questions.
Thank you. To my right, Councilwoman Ross?
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. I don't have any questions. Good evening to you both. Again, Director Ross, and just thank you for being here.
Thank you. Madam President?
Good evening. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Madam Vice President?
Good evening. I don't have any questions for you all.
Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Good evening. I do have a couple of questions. So, you are going to inventory the city's tree, all the trees in the city. And are you inventorying the city's trees to identify different, the different types of trees? Or what specifically are you looking for and what will you do with the results of what you find?
Sure. Yeah, there's, there's a whole list of data that will be collected, including species, tree height, condition. We, we do currently have an inventory. This is just for updating purposes. And this is part of the larger portion of the grant. We'll use this inventory to schedule work appropriately in different parts of the city, again, with that IRA grant. And these trees are only the trees within the right-of-way, so there's street trees between the curb and the sidewalk. But it does include city parks, which was recently not included in a inventory previously.
Okay, and so, you mentioned the trees between the curb and the sidewalk?
Right.
And those are the trees that you would do work on if, okay?
Correct. Those are within that public right-of-way that, that we would be performing work on.
Okay, so could the residents expect you to cut down their trees or?
If they're dead or dying, yes.
Okay, because I know that the homeowners have typically, are typically responsible for the trees, the overgrown trees on their property. So, I just wanted to know to what extent will you be, you know, assisting?
Sure, sure. Yeah, that, that's the, the, the main goal of the, the full IRA grant. This is just to just kind of identify what we have and update our current records. But I guess that might be a discussion for another time, but that is the, the main goal of the, the grant is to kind of take that burden off of some of the residents as, as far as grant funds are available.
Okay, and when do you anticipate, well, once this, oh, that's a question for later time.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, I, I will say that the inventory can, will likely happen sooner than later, but given certain times of the year, it can make it difficult. Ideally, you want to do that in the spring and summer. There might be a lag between the winter months, but relatively quick, I would imagine.
Okay, will we be able to receive a report and findings of what the outcomes are for this?
Yeah, so Arbor Pro does provide a live update. I think it was weekly. It might be bi-weekly. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris. But, but after that whole inventory is complete, all that data will be ours and we'll, we'll use that into our RGAS hub. So, we'll, we'll, we'll have, we'll house that data then.
Well, that would be interesting. I'd like to know what species are out there and, you know, if some of the work, the work that can be done, I'd like to know what could be done for our residents who have these overgrown trees on their properties and the, the ground is uplifting and it's just a mess in some of the areas. So, hopefully, this project could help. So, thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. And if I'm not mistaken, specific area would be right there in that Berry Hill corridor where the tornadoes did a lot of the damage, where a lot of those.
Yes, that area also, is it Chestnut Street?
Yep, yep.
Just past Nineteenth Street, Nineteenth and Chestnut.
Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with both of those locations, yeah.
Would those be something that this project would be able to take care of for the residents?
In the grand scheme, ideally, yes. This particular portion, no. This is just kind of getting the ground data.
Of course, there's the cataloging of it all, but I mean, the long-term.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so residents could look forward to some remediation for issues like that up until the grant allows it to?
Right, right. Right, right.
All right, are there any further questions from council? I know Councilwoman Shemane's not able to join us right now, all right? If there are none, I hear none, I'd like to move to add Resolution Forty-Two of Two Thousand and Twenty-Five to our next legislative session, and that concludes the work for the Public Works Committee, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. If you could please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity with which you live within the city. You'll have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. I'll begin to my right, is there anyone that would like to offer public comment?
Hi, my name is Sarnet Jackson and I live in the twenty-five-hundred block of Sixth Street. And my question is for the park on Radnor Street. They were tore down maybe about ninety days ago now, and school is out, so I was wondering what you guys have in place for that either being rebuilt or if you guys are gonna have some type of, what do you call that? No, not a program, they cross you across the street, crossing guards to get to the nearest playground, which is on Emerald Street, which is about a mile or, not a mile, a half a mile away from. Oh, is Emerald tore down too? Okay, so then there's no park other than McClay Street on Seventh Street for the uptown kids to go to, so I was wondering what you guys have planned for that?
Um, sorry, Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Ms. Director Ross is right there and she can answer your questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, the time is six forty-eight PM, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Thank you, we stand adjourned.